Hi everyone, I'm Zama. I work as coordinator of international affairs at the city of Espoo. And we've put together a pilot project that started in February. It's called the Town Hall Meetings, the Espoo Town Hall Meetings. The first one was held... Okay, I have a comment from Alth... Hello from Alth University. Hello, thank you for being here. Yes, so as I was saying, the first town hall event was in February this year. It was with the... Together with the Employment Services Department of the city of Espoo. And this one here today, we are with our wonderful colleagues at the Technical and Environment Services Department. So together with my colleagues Hannah Skellinen, I will be facilitating this event today. We also have Melissa Adni-Hardin, I think she is... Yeah, she's here. And so I think I will hand over the floor to Hannah to introduce yourself Hannah.
Yes, hello everyone, my name is Hannah Skellinen. I'm coworker of Zama, also international affairs coordinator in our urban and economic development unit. And we're very happy to see all of you that made it, even though it's a Friday afternoon. And I would also like to introduce Henna Partanen, which is here today as well, our vice chair of the city board, which is very nice that our local politicians are also interested in this. So one welcome to all.
Melissa, how about you go ahead and introduce yourself too?
Yes, thanks so much and hello everybody. My name is Melissa and I'm also working in the same unit with Zama and Hannah. I'm there as a project manager for a talent Espoo. So looking into how we can make Espoo more powerful in attracting and retaining international talents. And this is of course, one very important topic in that process. So I'm very happy that this town hall meeting has been organized and I'm looking forward to seeing how, what kinds of ideas come out.
Thank you, thank you Melissa, thank you Hannah. So I'll start with what is the Espoo Town Hall Meeting? The pilot project is basically an interactive English language residence event that has different themes related to the development of the city. And it was designed to simultaneously aid the city's understanding of the needs and wishes of the foreign speaking population in the development of the city's services. And as I said before, the first one was with the Employment Services Department. Today, we are here with our colleagues from the Technical and Environment Services Department. And we have three more events coming up in 2020, together with different departments in the city organization. So you're all, feel free to join them. Adila, I hope you enjoyed the online event. So Mika, you can start sharing your screen now.
Hello, I work as a project director of Lepipavara Area. And I will say on my screen, so I can say a few words about Lepipavara and future plans concerning about Lepipavara just a moment. So a few sentences about Lepipavara, which quite good describes Lepipavara area. Lepipavara is the largest and most active of Espoo centers with great connections all around the metropolitan area. And especially services, shops, workplaces, exercise and recreational possibilities are within walking distance and outdoors activities nearby. So these are the kind of strength of Lepipavara. So about the location, I assume that most of you know where the Lepipavara is. But still, because of those great traffic connections, there's this blue line which is Ring Road 1. And there's also crossing this Turku Motorway. And the green is the railway to Turku. And these all are crossing in Lepipavara. The traffic connections will improve once. The Räidejokeri light rail will start operating in 2024. And this is marked with the red line. So there's such, there's no other such place in Helsinki metropolitan area with such good traffic connections as we have in the future in Lepipavara. And above this, government has just decided to invest in city railway from Lepipavara to Kauklahti, marked with the yellow one here. For now on, the city railway has ended to Lepipavara. But in future, it will lead to Kauklahti. Lepipavara is the first, third biggest public transportation hub in Helsinki metropolitan area. And there's a... There's a... Or I have to say, public transport passengers make more than 50,000 shifts a day in Lepipavara. The two busiest traffic hubs before Lepipavara station are Rautatiasema and Basila. There's a great slogan that which is saying that the revolution of electric buses in Finland has started in Lepipavara. And that's true. Lepipavara station is Finland's largest electric bus terminal. Starting this year, almost 40% of all shifts operated from Lepipavara is driven by electric buses. This is quite great thing because city of Espoo has decided to be carbon neutral by year 2030. I think the biggest thing still is that the carbon neutrality in district heating by year 2030. Okay, and this I have marked with the red, red color, the area of Great and Lepipavara. It also includes neighborhoods of Karakalloj, Kilo, Laaxlahti, Lintovara, Lipajarvi, Sepakylöen, Viherlaaxo. The total amount of inhabitants at the moment is a bit over 71,000 people who are living in this area. And earlier, it was estimated to break the 100,000 by 2050. But we have to correct these estimations. And now I can say that it's more obvious to reach this 100,000 people by year 2040. Okay, and there's a few statistics. There's these pillars that you can see the different regions of Espoo. The first one is Lepipavara and it's showing your age distribution of inhabitants. There's a quarter of all working as residents in Espoo are living in Lepipavara area. Lepipavara has more young adults and fewer elderly people than other regions in Espoo. And there's a statistics about the share of foreign speaking residents in different regions of Espoo. Again, the Lepipavara is the first one. It's a kind of average amount of international residents. And actual amount, total amount is, I think it's nowadays a bit under 14,000 residents, foreign speaking residents. But the number of foreign speaking inhabitants will grow rapidly also in the future. Last year, 67% of Espoo's population growth came from abroad. So the rise and the share of foreign speaking inhabitants will be rising and will be remarkable in the future. And that's why we need you to join us to develop these areas together. Because of good public transport connections, only half of households in Lepipavara own the car. Maybe nice to know. And about these workplaces, there are almost 30,000 shops in Lepipavara region, which is quarter of all shops in Espoo. But Lepipavara locates also in the midst of the largest national concentration of the information technology industry. And inside of this half circle, which is marked with the orange, locates one quarter of all national workplaces of the information technology. And the red dot here, which is Lepipavara, is the kind of center of this area and provides commercial services and other services for these technical information hubs. And which is really interesting, the upcoming light rail will link these IT hubs together as a one entity. Okay, and Lepipavara has been and still is the most wanted location in Espoo among the companies that are currently located in Espoo, Helsinki or Vanta. But the competition is hard, I have to say. But still trying to keep it this way. And the most satisfied residents of Espoo live also in Lepipavara. People are especially pleased with the public services and the quality of built environment. There's versatile opportunities for hobbies and leisure. For example, an athletic stadium, swimming hall with outdoor pool, adventure park Huippu, as seen in the picture. There's a, the first one is from the sport park, which is actually the biggest sport park in Espoo. And there's also golf driving rates, several disc golf courses, the national main horse track, horse racetrack in Verma. So I hope you like horses. And of course, there's also space for culture. For example, actually Gallenart Gallery in Tarvaspa, the white building in the center, and movie theaters, etc. The city of Espoo has started this improvement project of the station area to make it more comfortable, brighter and safer. And I have to admit that the old appearance of the underpass was quite depressing. So I'm very pleased that we have done this. And this picture is from the underpass of Alperkanporti, which is also this route which will lead to station area. And you can see the winning entry of the street art competition Tunnel of Love, which is in the picture. But you can see it at the moment because now there's this light rail construction worksite above this tunnel. So just visit a bit later. Okay, and I promise to say a few words about most important development projects. I think the most remarkable is this Lepipavara Center, which is the most important development project in the area. Basic aim is to enlarge walkable center of Lepipavara, diminish the feeling of divided city and offer better services, better service quality for public transportation passengers. And also in the future, north and south Lepipavara will be better connected by the new terminal bridge, which you can see in the center of picture. And there's also this extension of a cellular mall, which will include some commercial space or possibly some public services. And in the left side or in the west side of the bridge, there will be a new parking hall for cellular customers. Construction phase is estimated to take place between 21 and 28. These new buildings will include new homes for 700 new inhabitants, office spaces, hotel and commercial premises. And then this Vermonytu area building project. And there's this, in Vermonytu residential construction of 227,000 square meters will be provided, a home to 6,000 new inhabitants. And we made some kind of record in 2018 because more floor square meters began to build in Vermonytu area than ever before during this millennium in Espoo. So I have a very strong feeling that people want to locate in Lepipavara. This area construction will be largely completed by 2022. And there will be also new school center, which you can see on the right side of the picture. And that will include daycare center and primary and secondary schools. So we are not forgetting public services here. And I assume that this is the worksite that you have noticed. Is it just next to the Ring 1 on the eastern side of it? It's this oasis of professional, professionals called Oops. Bit funny maybe. And this Oop will further increase Lepipavara's current offering of commercial services. It's now one of the largest property development projects in metropolitan area. And it includes nearly 100,000 square meters, new office, reader space, free time activities, maybe a hotel and apartments. The apartments you can see, there's a just a sketch but on the right side of the picture. In the center is this commercial spa, commercial part. And before that, on the side of the road, there's a room for hotel. And the closest part from the Ring 1 is the office part. Someone has said that this will be the new living room for the residents of Lepipavara. And there's a big possibility that it would be really nice when we have set the upcoming park in the center of this, or kind of surrounded these blocks that we have planned. So let's see how it goes. Okay, and we have few other these area development projects. This is Satterinkulma, which is 1 km from the south to south from Sello. It's mostly, or it's just basically housing, being planned for approximately 800 residents. The cityscape of the area will be quite dense and urban. But just that, just because it locates just next to the upcoming light rail. And you can see there's a light rail, Räidejokeri going on on the tracks on the right. So this is in the corner of Turku Motorway and Ring 1, Ring Road 1. And then this multi-purpose, multifunction sports hall. The zoning proposal for Lepipavara Sports Park will be declared legal in few weeks, at least I hope so. The proposal includes new multifunction hall, which is estimated to be ready for use in autumn of 2022. The sports hall will have mostly space for athletics and team sports. But nice thing that multifunction hall also enables your organization of rock or pop concerts and various fairs in Lepipavara. And this is something that we have been missing before because we don't have such place for concerts. We have this cellular hall, concert hall, but it's just more like theater than designed for rock concerts. And there's a picture from a sketch from the Makkulankoya, which is ongoing zoning project. It has just started. And there will be new community center than equivalent block of the apartment buildings known as Bokula. The aim is to build some, maybe 400 new homes in the area by 26. And this is something which has not started. It's upcoming project. The city of Espoo will start a new zoning process in the area of this former metropolitan university at last 2021. And I think the school building has been demolished in last spring. And now we are just waiting the next steps. So yeah, I want to say that stay tuned. There's few web links, but I think that Zama has shared them in the chat box. So I'm saying thank you. And it's Zama's turn to continue from here.
Hi, my name is Johanna Palomaki and I come from the city planning department at the Technical and Environmental Services. I work in the master planning unit, which does sort of city level strategic planning. And here is my colleague Heli Maya, can you present yourself?
Hello everybody, do you hear me? My name is Heli Maya and I work with communication and participation in urban planning.
Okay, and Heli Maya and I have prepared this presentation together. But we decided that I shall do the talking this afternoon. All right, so a few words about planning for the more long term future of Espoo. Mika has talked about very concrete projects that are already real, in the phase of realization. And I'll tell a little bit what happens before, before that phase. Our motto in the city planning department is that we'd like to make a city for people with the people. We want to take the perspective that we want to listen to the users of the city, the residents, other actors who work there and create the Espoo story together. Mika already showed this picture. And but I would just like to mention that Espoo is one of the fastest growing cities in Finland. And we are developing it as a network city, trying to find a balance between finding places to live for the new residents, the new inhabitants and the new businesses, but preserving the natural environments and the beautiful green areas that Espoo has. And developing the five city centers based on the current characteristics that each city center has. And Mika has described quite a lot of the characteristics of Lepipavara in his presentation. We have similar approaches to all five city centers. About the planning system and the process, urban planning starts with setting the objectives of the plan. Well, it actually starts even before that, programming the planning each year. We look at the whole picture of what's going on in all parts of the city and making a planning program for the whole city. And then setting objectives for each city plan, which are initiated either by landowners or by the city itself. Planning starts with collecting background information and then setting the goals for the plan. For example, how many inhabitants we want to allocate to an area? How many square meters of new built residential area? What kind of services, what kind of mobility we want to support in that area? The objectives are like that. Then the plan processes into preparation phase and starts with making a participation and assessment plan, which is a document meant for you, the participants of the plan, to be able to see how you can participate in the planning process. Then from the preparation phase, we go into proposing a planning solution, an actual visualized plan on a map with all the attached documents. And it goes into public review and you can state your opinions on it. And from there, it goes into the political decision making process. And after the city council or the city board have made a decision on the plan, there's still a possibility to appeal to the court of administration on the plan. And after that process has ended, the plans are ratified and they are put into force. And then you can, in the case of master plans, devise detailed plans based on the master plan. Or in the case of detailed plans, you can apply for building permits which are in compliance with the detailed plan. The Espoo City Planning Department employs about 130 people that work in master planning, detailed planning and traffic and transport planning. And also in communications like Heli Maya. We do master plans and local detailed plans and we plan traffic and mobility in the city. Then also the nomenclature of the city is planned in our department. That means that the names of new streets and new public squares and public parks are decided in the framework of the detailed plans. There are about 50 new local detailed plans ongoing each year, containing about 350,000 square meters of floor space. And we have several master plans ongoing. You have a say in the development of your neighborhood. How does that happen? When the plans are being prepared, residents are able to participate in the planning process by giving background information, experiential knowledge into the plan, discussing with the planners and then in the sort of bureaucratic process of the plan to give opinions and reminders of the planning solution. And then there's this discussion with decision makers in the process when the decision makers put the plan on public review and make the final decision of the plan. I think planning is much about using multiple knowledges to achieve positive change in the city. The city changes all the time, whether we do anything or not as planners. And I think the purpose of planning is to gather that rich knowledge that we have about the city in different categories and try and analyze it and put it together and discuss it together with the whole city. try and analyze it and put it together and discuss it together with the whole city community to achieve positive change in the living environment. And this illustration shows you examples of categories of knowledge that we have. And one important category that I would like to point out is this people's experiential place based knowledge, which is a very valuable data set for us at the Planning Department. You can give that experiential knowledge to us in public events, workshops, digitally in many ways, questionnaires, map questionnaires and so on.
Yes, well, thank you, Johanna, for that interesting presentation. Next, we have Niko Riapponen from the city city of Espoo. He is a participation designer and and will speak today about the opportunities for residents to participate in development of the city.
Or building the city, as I like to say. Hello, my name is Niko Riapponen. I work as a participation designer here at the Public Works Department. I will now show you something we do and then tell you how you can participate in in the building of our city. So we are around five hundred staff members, the Public Works Department, and we actually build all the infrastructure like roads and and parks in Espoo. The investment around yearly is around one hundred and fifty million euros and is spent in two hundred to three hundred projects every year. And in the picture, you can, you can see some of our infrastructure like roads and then green area. And also the the wall that takes the traffic noise and keeps it out of the residential area. And actually, in the, in the wall, you can see old pictures of 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 that area. They are together with the city museum. We have designed the the wall and now it kind of implement like have has art pieces in 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 it. And I think this is a good example of of the many, many code designing we do at our department. We are actually doing so many things and facilitating lots of things that I draw this map for you. And here is I'm from knowing to doing and from using to building. I I kind of shared our things that we are doing so that you can see the complexity or or the the wide range of things you can do with us. So here we have, I I put us in in the four corners like so that you can see what everything that we are doing and what you can do with us. And and here I I use this from knowing to doing Axel and then building to using the city. So so we have, let's take the give feedback. So we have around forty thousand feedbacks every year by from from the citizens. And this is really important, like a, like a ear to us. So we can hear you and then make, make things better in the city. Then we, then we have about three hundred like voluntary like maintenance contracts made with you. So so actually, some residents are maintaining our public spaces and we are giving them permissions to do that. And this is a really big help for us to have more cleaner city and more nicer spaces, but also give residents good good things and and able to get their own surroundings better. Then we have about eight thousand voluntary workers taking part in our spring cleanup. So so actually, a lot of the trash that's that is built it up in the winter is cleaned up in the springtime together with all the citizens. Then we have about one thousand, one hundred, one thousand, one hundred residents community gardening in our about, I think there is about twelve or something community gardens that you can rent a place and have have your own vegetables grown there. And then in the down corner, we have ten rowing boats that you can rent and have a have a nice little row on the on the seaside of the Espoo. So as you can see, it's it's really wide range of things we are involved with. And and this is all just a couple of examples of of things we can, you can do with us. So some good sites that you can use. And and here I have to say that we have some information in English, but all all is not yet in English, but we are constantly developing this area. So the voluntary work pages, you can find it easily from Espoo dot fi. The feedback system is translated, so you can really get, give us feedback in English. And and then we have a development project like Hotikatu Portal, which is also in English. So here you can type your address and you can see all the projects that are surround surrounding areas to your address. So this is the new, new, new Espoo Espoo services. And also we are working with application. I can't say when we have it, but I think in some years we will have or in a year, maybe we have an application to to use, to to participate in our projects. Now you can use application to give feedback about environment. So so feel free to download Trimple Feedback app and and give us feedback with the photos. Thank you very much. And now it's back to Samah.
Well, thank you, Nico. I would like to also share some work that Hannah and I have been working on from the city of Espoo. And it's basically to deal with the questionnaires that we had put forward. So we had, we had a registration questionnaire as well as a survey for the urban planning case Lepavara. And I just want to show you before we head into the talking about the ideas and your comments, feedback, the results from those, from the questionnaires. First of all, one of the questions that we asked was why Lepavara? Why would you move to Lepavara? Why do you live in Lepavara? Or why are you thinking of moving to Lepavara? And the options were public transport connectivity, transport connectivity with personal vehicles, services, access to nature and parks, public spaces, others, cultural diversity. And as you can see in the pie chart, it's, it looks really interesting because it's pretty much spread out through all of these. So it's great to know that all of these aspects are appreciated by the residents of Lepavara. And moving on to what works, we asked the participants, what's great about Lepavara? What works for you? And we have, we had so many different really nice answers, which we've sort of separated into like three groups. Access to nature and services is one, transport and connectivity is another, and then there's a group of other benefits. And as you can see, there's a lot of things that we appreciate about Lepavara is related to the services, accessibility, having nature, being a central location for both transport, for job opportunities, closeness to the city center. There's no need for a personal vehicle. Although university is minutes away, there's, there are great sports facilities. There is, we have one participant who who appreciated the accessibility services for the specially able. How great housing options, diversity. So all of these are the great things about Lepavara. Then we asked the participants, what could, what, what needs work? What could be better? And we've got again really lovely answers from everybody, starting with more public art and sculptures in the public spaces. So this is goes hand in hand with what Nico just presented. And forests and children play areas could be better. The participants are aware that citizens show sometimes a carelessness towards public service and facilities. And hand in hand with lack of monitoring by the city, it can create dirtiness. And they have mentioned the Sello Underground Crossing, safety problems. They have mentioned Lucky Tori, Lucky Sapankoya area. Visual appearance, connectivity with nature could be better. More cafes, more entertainment options, modern public spaces. So this is what we are hearing as feedback from the residents of Lepavara area and Espoo about the area. And in terms of culture, in terms of internationalization, participants have asked that they would like bilingual schools and daycares. Very interestingly, they have stated that mingling of Finnish and international residents needs work. It could be better. Cultural exchange could be encouraged and enabled by the city. They have mentioned that apparently and at international events, mostly international residents appear. How do we engage Finnish residents to participate as well? Then more public events embrace that embrace diversity. And we even had some examples. Somebody, somebody had given the idea of having a International Restaurant Day in Lepavara Center. And a lot of great ideas. Then comes the communication aspect of it and we have a lot of comments regarding how better communication, better informational channels, more options to collaborate. Again, goes hand in hand with the presentations that Johanna has given as well as Nico. Access to information, more surveys and polls in English. Again, go ahead with the Moon Espoo, My Espoo survey. More opportunities to interact with the city organization. Communication about rules and usage of public spaces could be better. So these are the things that that would, that could need work. And based on these, the responses of, we also have, yes, this is a really interesting question that we had, basically, how do you envision Lepavara twenty thirty, twenty fifty? And we, we, Hannah and I found this really interesting. There were too carbon neutral. They, they, people want Lepavara to be carbon neutral very soon. And we also had a response to the previous question that the accessibility in what's great about Lepavara, one person commented that the accessibility reduces his own carbon footprint. So that was pretty interesting to know that people are really sort of careful about their carbon footprint and things like that. Then safe, innovative, entertaining, joyful, open, secure, a business hub, metropolitan. Mika Rantala's presentation sort of goes hand in hand with this, that you know, the Lepavara is definitely becoming a business hub and metropolitan as well. Great public facilities, culturally diverse, English services for all, high, dense, mixed architecture, sports, parks. So these are all really interesting things of envisioning Lepavara twenty thirty, twenty fifty. As Johanna rightly said, this is not, this is just sort of the beginning of an attempt to reach out to international residents and to provide a platform for them, for the voices to be heard. And so we will be holding more events like this and hopefully hoping for more participation. Maybe once we get used to the whole webinar situation in this Corona times, maybe we will see more people joining in and participating. But I would like to, as as a parting comment, say that I'm very happy to those of who are here. I think the program went quite well and we've learned a bit. And it was a good experience. And I think Hannah, would you like to say, say a few words now?
Yeah, well, you said it all. Thank you for all the participants and all the presenters joining this event. And even though there was not many of us, but I think we got many, many good ideas. So we also put the platform and network for international residents in Espoo. So hello Espoo website and also hello Espoo Facebook group. So feel free to join.